I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for January 12th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and the phone number. The city upgraded its Zoom software so it allows us to easily conduct events with a simpler interface in a professional setting. There are two groups of participants. Those are panelists and attendees. Panelists are those you will see on the platforms such as elected officials, the city administrator, city attorney, and any staff or person making a presentation. Attendees are those in the audience. Attendees will still be able to speak for three minutes during business from the audience or during agenda items if they are signed up to do so. Additionally, if members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next scheduled council meeting. Our consent agenda includes approval of the December 8th, 2020 meeting minutes, approval of the November bank balances, budget report for periods ending November 30th, 2020, approval of the November check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for December 2020, and the approval of an extension of the intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an IGA, between the city of Gladstone and Clackamas County for the community food distribution program. Our regular meeting agenda includes selection of the city council president per Chapter 4, Section 18 of the Gladstone City Charter, 2019 to 2020 City of Gladstone Fiscal Audit, city council liaison appointments, discussion of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, the process for replacing the municipal judge and city administrator employment agreement. Our urban renewal meeting agenda includes approval of the February 11th, 2020 Urban Renewal Meeting Minutes and the 2019-2020 Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Audit. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner or Counselor Ripley? Counselor Alexander?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Hartman?
Present.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Present.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections? Jackie?
Madam Mayor, I have none, no.
All right, thank you. So the first item on our agenda is the consent... Excuse me?
My hand was up, sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we have a very limited number of pictures appear on the screen, yes.
No worries. I would like to make an amendment to the agenda and add an item to discuss.
Okay, what would that be?
I've been contacted by several constituents asking why the city of Gladstone or if the city of Gladstone will be making a statement condemning the insurrection at the Capitol and what the plans are for the safety of our community and businesses and our city buildings.
Okay, so you want to add that as item number 16, I'm assuming?
Sure, whichever it fits in our agenda.
Okay, so just because you haven't been here before, usually we like to receive information before the agenda and the packet is released so that the council has sufficient time to look at the request and hopefully provide us with documentation so that we can make an informed decision.
Mayor, I think this is informational. I think she's allowed to the agenda when called for additions to the agenda.
Okay, well, it sounds like she's asking for action. And the other thing is that citizens need to be allowed the time to weigh in and that requires notification and we have not given any notification for this. So just keep that in mind. We'll add it as number 16. But keep that in mind when we have our discussion.
Sure. Yeah, and I also just want to let everyone know that I've already approached Jackie Betts as well as Police Chief Schmerber about the fact that I would be bringing this up so that they're prepared to make statements.
Right, thank you. All right, so we'll add that as number 16. So the first item is our consent agenda. Do we have any discussion?
I just have a call to question, sorry.
Yes?
I was reading through it and I saw that if we exceed the $30,000 cap, if we do exceed that, I know that we didn't spend, you know, we only spent $2,000 in about 10 months. So it's probably not something that we will do. But is there a solution that if we do exceed the $3,000, who will be responsible for the remaining balance?
So you're mentioning a $30,000 or a $3,000. You mentioned both. And what exactly is this money for?
I'm sorry. For item number seven, the approval of extension of the IGA.
Okay. So what we would like to do then is if somebody would like to make a motion to pull item number seven from the consent agenda so that we can pass the rest of it and have a discussion, or is there anybody that wants to pull items one through six? Will someone make a motion then to approve items one through six and pull number seven?
I'll make it to approve item one through six, please, and pull seven.
Do I have a second?
One second.
A motion was made by Counselor Todd and seconded by Counselor Ripley. Do we have any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Alexander?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, thank you. So number seven, go ahead again. Counselor Hartman?
Yes, so I just, I noticed in the verbiage it said, you know, they will cover up to the $3,000 cap. And so it's just a question for clarification. Do we have a solution if we should go over that $3,000?
Staff?
Thank you. So Clackamas County has an agreement with the senior center to recover costs for janitorial, utilities, electrical, and pest control. In the first six months, it has been very nominal. The short answer is if it goes over the $3,000, then yes, the county is very amenable to paying what the overage is. We don't foresee that happening, but the county has been very fair with how they're compensating for that. So the city would not have to pick up those costs. The county would make us whole if it goes over that amount.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having the answer readily available. Do we have any other questions or concerns on this one? I don't hear anything. Would someone please make a motion then to approve item number seven on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven of the consent agenda.
One second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy Todd and seconded by Counselor Matt Tracy. Do we have any further discussion? I don't hear any. So Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, consent agenda item number seven has passed. It looks like we do not have any correspondence, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor, thank you.
All right, so a couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decision. They start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking time to participate in this process and I believe we will have you all muted until it is your time to speak. If we're not able to mute you, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging and I hope all of you can help us do that. So first item is number eight on the regular agenda and that is section of the city council president, election of a city council president per Chapter 4, Section 18 of the city charter. Staff, do you have anything to say?
No, I think that it's up to the city council to nominate and then approve who the council president is going to be for the next two years.
Okay, I do have one question because in the charter it says it has to be a ballot vote, which unfortunately we are not able to do now. So is a roll call vote going to be okay?
Yes, that's what we've done in the past, but I can let Chad verify that.
Is Chad on?
Hi, sorry, I have some computer issues there. Mayor, members of the council, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. Yeah, absolutely, you guys can do a roll call vote tonight for the purposes of electing a council president. If you have more than one nominee, then we can work out a way to do that as far as doing it by hand instead of written ballot.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll move forward. So I'm going to start and I'm going to nominate Counselor Mindy Garlington. She has extensive committee and board experience. She served on the Parks and Rec Board most recently as the vice chair and she's led meetings. She's been involved with the city for many years and understands the importance of positive staff and community interaction. Would somebody else like to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Matt Tracy, please. I believe he's been the president for the last two years. He's led our meetings in your absence in the past and I think he's done a phenomenal job.
All right, anybody else have a nomination?
I would agree with that Matt Tracy thing. Nothing personal against Mindy, but I think, being new to council, I'm not sure if that's the right position to throw a new person in until you've been to a few meetings and they kind of know what's going on. I think it could be a trap or a setup for failure if it wasn't done correctly. So I think somebody who's already been on council for a little bit would be a little better choice.
All right, any other comments? Counselor Alexander?
I have no comments.
All right, Counselor Hartman?
I would agree with Counselor Ripley and Counselor Todd. I would nominate Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Garlington?
I have no comment, just thank you.
All right, well, because we have two, we're going to have to come up with another solution. But what I do want to say is that I'm uncomfortable with the nomination of Counselor Tracy at this time because it's something that's happened recently. It's an HR issue, so we can't speak about it in public. And so I'm not sure if that's something that we would like to go into an executive session about.
Yeah, I think we should because Counselor Tracy is completely unaware of anything that has to do with him at the moment.
You have no idea what I'm talking about?
I do not, Mayor, so we probably ought to break into executive session.
Okay. Counselor Chad, how do we do this?
Well, without knowing exactly what you want to talk about, we can only go into executive session for various specific reasons and you don't have the ability to go into executive session to discuss a council president. If there are new allegations about a counselor, then you can go into executive session to do that. But we're required to give, generally required to give 24 hours notice before we do that and give the counselor an opportunity to request that the session be held in an open meeting. Now, certainly Counselor Tracy is here and if he's willing to, he could waive that and we could go in and discuss allegations against him. If it's an old issue that's already been taken care of, I'm not sure that that particular provision of state law would apply. And so I'm bracking my brain a little bit to figure out how you would go into executive session to discuss something that's not a new allegation.
Okay.
So I guess for point of clarification, is this a new allegation or an old allegation?
No, it is not.
No, it is not what, a new allegation?
A new allegation, no.
Okay, so asked and answered, I think this is, if this is something that's already been taken care of, I think we're kind of beyond whatever that was and where we left that standing. I mean, Madam Mayor, you just called me on the carpet in a public meeting and are basically casting aspersions and now we have a community that thinks that I did something.
I'm telling you that I was uncomfortable with it.
Well, that's not what you did.
That's exactly what I said, that I was uncomfortable with it.
You just cited allegations against me and nobody in the community knows what you're talking about. So I'm glad to daylight this, but I don't think it's going to reflect well on other people necessarily. I'm just really pretty much astounded that you're bringing this up in the middle of a meeting. If you're talking about a case that involved the city manager in my questioning about our position in forwarding an anti-racism resolution several months ago, I think you're kind of on some thin ice here. I don't understand what you're bringing up because that was asked, answered, and we took care of that. So I'm really at a loss because I'm surprised that you would bring this up in the middle of a public meeting. I thought we were taking care of that between the three parties.
That it was behind us, that it was behind us. All right, that's fine, then let's just take a vote then.
Not fine, believe me.
No, not fine. We will be discussing it. Yeah, no problem. All right, then since we have two people going for council president, how do we handle this, Chad?
So typically what we would do is you would call for all votes who wanted to vote for Counselor Garlington and then call for all votes who wanted to vote for Counselor Tracy and we would add up those votes and see where we were at. And if we had a majority, then that person would win. If we don't have a majority, then we can take next steps from there.
All right, so can we just do the roll call vote then? That just seems to be the easiest.
Sure.
Yeah. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
We're doing a roll call vote for Mindy Garlington first, is that correct?
Yes.
So if I could just interject, what I would do is just call on each person and they can say whether they're going to vote for Counselor Garlington or Counselor Tracy.
Perfect.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Todd?
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Garlington?
Garlington.
Counselor Ripley?
Counselor Matt Tracy.
Counselor Alexander?
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Tracy.
I'm going to go ahead and I'm staying from the vote.
Mayor Stimple?
Counselor Garlington. So Counselor Matt Tracy is the council president. All right, thank you. Next item is number nine, which is the 2019-2020 City of Gladstone Fiscal Audit. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and bring in our interim finance director Kathy Brucker and Tanya, who is with Marina and Company as our auditors. The city of Gladstone is required to prepare and file annually with the Secretary of State Audit Division. They're going to go over the financial reports for you tonight for both the city of Gladstone and the city of Gladstone Urban Renewal District when you adjourn and open up into that meeting. I'm very pleased with the work that's been done this past year. Our audit committee had a chance to review the financials as well. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and let Kathy and Tanya give you a highlight of the audit report.
And thank you very much, Jackie. As far as the audit, as Jackie had said, we do complete this annually. They are prescribed reports that we have to prepare and then they are audited annually. Also, we've employed Marina and Company, contracted with Marina and Company for several years now and they've done a fine job. With that, I'll turn it over to Tanya from Marina and Company to be able to give you more specific information. And then if you have any further questions for me, I absolutely, you know, would love to answer them. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and city council, I'm pleased to present the city of Gladstone's June 30, 2020 audited financial statements. This year was done a little bit differently than in the past. Because of social distancing and everything that's been going on in the world, we did a 100% remote audit for the city of Gladstone. So what that means is we didn't actually go on site to be doing our testing. We had all the documents either sent to us or we confirmed with external parties for the numbers that are presented in the financial statement. I'm pleased to present and let you know that the city had an unmodified or a clean opinion. That is the highest level of a financial statement opinion that we can give on a financial statement audit. The opinion for the financial statements are limited to the basic financial statements as well as the supplemental information. We apply limited procedures to what's called the management discussion and analysis, which is a great place to look if you're looking for historical information. There's two years' worth of information there on the management discussion and analysis. It's one of my favorite places in the financial statements because it has two years' worth of information as well as a comparison there. And it does really high-level information about the city. So the management discussion analysis is one of my favorite things. Although it's not audited, we still read it to make sure that that information agrees to the rest of the information in the financial statements. There's also some schedules in the required supplementary information that are in regards to the pension as well as the other post-employment healthcare benefits. Those are not audited by us as well, but we do read them and make sure that they agree to the information presented elsewhere in the financial statements. The introductory section has not been audited by us. So if one of your names is spelled wrong, I apologize, we don't audit that. So then we go through and we do the financial statement audit and ensure that the information in there is accurate and not materially misstated. There were no restrictions placed on our audit and we incurred no significant difficulties during the course of the audit. There were no disagreements noted with management. There is one new accounting pronouncement that was adopted this fiscal year, but that accounting pronouncement basically pushed off adopting some of the other accounting pronouncements. So it was kind of a COVID-related accounting pronouncement that said, "We're going to wait and not implement, add extra stuff this year and add all these new things." So if you compare the June 30, 2019 financial statements to the June 30, 2020 financial statements, you're going to be comparing apples to apples. So there's no new, at least, accounting changes in there that are going to make them so that they don't compare because sometimes we do, we like to do that. Accountants, we're nerds, so we sometimes like to do those changes just for the fun of it. I'm just kidding, but... So they're comparative. There are some accounting estimates in the financial statements. So for example, depreciation. We don't know exactly how long a police car is going to last. Like, it might last for five years, it might last for 10 years. We don't exactly know. So there's an estimate in there about how long that useful life of that asset is going to be. There's also compensated absences is another estimate in the financial statement. So for example, all of the accrued vacation is at the salary of the employee at June 30. So whatever their hourly rate is then, based on how many hours of vacation time they have, that's what it's accrued at. But let's say that the employee doesn't take that vacation for two years. They might have a cost of living increase or something like that. So that number could be off a little bit, so we call it an accounting estimate. The largest number in the financial statements that is an estimate is the net pension liability. And so if any of you guys have been following Oregon PERS, this is something that a lot of people have concerned about. And not to say that we shouldn't be concerned about, it's always been there, but it's a new accounting standard to have that number presented in the financial statement. As long as the city is making the required annual contributions, so what is required each year to be made on those payments, theoretically, the city will cover those future liabilities. So the net pension liability is the largest estimate in the financial statements. That is not a number that city employees or personnel come up with. That is a number that the actuaries come up with. So they go through and base it off of timetables, life expectancy rates, all of those things. So even though it's an estimate, an actuary has actually done that and it's based off of actuary rules. The other estimate in the financial statement is the net post-employment healthcare benefits. So that's benefits to employees when they retire and there might be a period of time in between the time that they retire and they go on social security. And so that period of time, the state requires the city to offer them health insurance. And so that raises the rates for the rest of the employees within the city. So it's just this little gap essentially of coverage. And so that's called the other post-employment benefit liability. So those are the estimates that are in the city's financial statements. We didn't note any transactions entered into by the city during the year that lacked authoritative guidance. So there's nothing really strange that the city had to come up with how to do it. There was one minor item noted in the financial statements and that is a timing issue for unbilled revenue. And that's every single year we have that same little bit and that's just the way that the timing issue works. But there were no material misstatements noted when we were doing the financial statements. In some cases, management may decide to consult with other accountants or other CPAs for a second opinion and there were no such outside consultation that we are aware of. Now, the one unique thing to Oregon municipal financial statements is there's a report required by Oregon state regulations. So this is located on page 9-103 and this is the independent auditors report required by Oregon state regulations. The Oregon state legislature has told municipal auditors there's a few items that they would like us to look at when we are doing the financial statement audit. So for example, they have us look at ORS 279, which is public purchasing rules, to make sure that if the city has entered into any contracts, that they've went through the proper channels. So posting it in the newspaper so everybody has an opportunity to bid on that project. And then the lowest bidder is selected unless there's something missing from that contract. So there's specific rules that wouldn't necessarily be looked at by a financial statement audit normally and these are those items that have been identified by the Oregon state legislature. It also includes Oregon budget law, that the city has been in compliance with making sure that they have posted the budget appropriately in the paper, that the public had an opportunity to come and speak on those. Insurance and viability bonds to make sure that the city has insurance coverage. So these are the things that they have us look at and I'm happy to report that we didn't have any findings for the required report for Oregon state regulations. Does anybody have any questions on the city's financial statements before we go into the urban renewal?
No, but we need to adjourn out of the regular meeting for this and then go into the urban renewal. So don't start that quite yet.
Correct.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I'm just going to go through you one by one so I don't forget anybody. Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any questions.
Counselor Alexander?
I have questions.
Counselor Tracy? Counselor Tracy?
Sorry, no questions, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
Just have one question for Ms. Tanya. Thank you so much for preparing this. I just had a question on 9-3, just for clarification. And when it says compliance with all ethics requirements, can you explain what those ethical requirements are?
Yes, that is the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants has specific ethics requirements that if our audit is in, basically going through their standards, those requirements include items such as the ethics rules with the... those requirements include items such as the ethics rules with the AICPA or the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. It's for a member in public practice to maintain the objectivity and independence required a continuing assessment of client relationships and public responsibility, such as a member who provides auditing or other test services should be independent in fact and in appearance in providing all other services, and members should maintain objectivity and avoid conflicts of interest. There are also other standards, the government auditing standards. And we also have independence and ethics issues there as well. So for example, a great example of some of our independence and ethics issues would be if, like my significant other, worked for the city, I probably wouldn't be independent of the city because part of my personal income would be, basically we're coming from the city maintaining and doing well. So if I found something, I maybe wouldn't want to report that because it would affect my personal income. So related party transactions can be some of those independence and ethics issues as well. So we have some very specific rules that we have to follow and make sure that we maintain while we are doing an audit, or else an auditor would not be independent. So if we were making any sort of management decisions for the city, that would also constitute an independence or ethics issue for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Counselor Hartman?
No.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Garlington?
No.
All right. So I don't have any questions either. So you need someone to make a motion to accept the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Okay, Counselor Garlington.
Given that I've already voted on this, do I vote on it again?
Good question.
Okay.
So to provide some background for Chad is Ms. Garlington was on the Audit Committee in December. She was not an elected official and she approved the audit as part of the Audit Committee. However, now she is an elected official and is asking for permission to go ahead and vote on the audit.
Yeah, and that's fine for you to do so, Counselor Garlington. If it was a quasi-judicial matter such as an appeal from the Planning Commission, that might be a different story. But in this case, this is an administrative matter. So you can go ahead and vote on it both as a member of the Audit Committee and as a member of the City Council.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So would someone like to make a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
All right, do I have a second?
One second.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded in tandem by Counselor Ripley and Counselor Todd to approve the City of Gladstone Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2020. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any hands. I don't hear any voices. So Tammy, could you please do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd?
Yes. Sorry.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy? Counselor Hartman? Mayor Stempel?
Yes, so the 2019-2020 City of Gladstone Fiscal Audit has been approved. So we need to adjourn into the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. So I need a motion from somebody to do so.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Ripley, to adjourn to the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. Do we have any discussion? I don't see or hear anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, thank you. We are adjourning into the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. So at this time, I call to order the City of Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. It's January 12, 2021 at 7:05 PM. First item on our agenda is number 10, which is approval of the February 11, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minutes. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Garlington?
No discussion.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Hartman?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
No.
Counselor Alexander?
None.
Counselor Ripley?
No.
Could somebody make a motion then to approve the minutes?
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? Who?
I will.
Alexander, all right. Motion was made by Counselor Todd and seconded by Counselor Alexander to approve the February 11, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minutes. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any hands or hear any voices again. So Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington?
Prove. Prove.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy? Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, the February 11, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minutes have been approved. Next item is number 11, which is consider accepting the 2019-2020 Gladstone Urban Renewal Fiscal Audit. Staff? Thank you. Again, I'm going to hand it over to Tanya to give a brief overview of the financial statements for the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency.
Thank you. I am happy to present the June 30, 2020 Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Financial Report. And we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is the highest level of financial statement opinion that we can give on a financial statement as of December 21, 2020. The opinion on the financial statements is limited to the basic financial statement information. And again, we did not audit the agency information or the management discussion and analysis. We do read the management discussion and analysis to make sure that that information agrees to the information in the financial statements. Again, if there's any part that I can point you towards, that's the great part to read because it has two years' worth of information. We did not have any issues while we were doing the Urban Renewal Agency, just like the city as well. And then for the required communications required for those charged with governance, we have had the one new accounting policy, which was the Gatsby 95, to push off all the other accounting pronouncements. So if you compare the June 30, 2019 and the June 30, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Financial Statements, they are comparable. You will be comparing the same thing. We didn't find any transactions that the agency entered into that lacked authoritative guidance. And we had no restrictions placed on our audit or disagreements with management. There were no material misstatements noted for proper presentation. And there was no external consultation with other accountants. For the Oregon State Regulations, auditors report required by Oregon State Regulators for the Urban Renewal Agency, that is on page 11-36 of the packet. And we had no findings for the Urban Renewal Agency as well. We appreciate the opportunity to have been of service for the City of Gladstone and the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency and look forward to working with you in the future. I'd also like to give a shout out to the Accounting Department as well as city staff for the hard work and effort that they have put into making sure that these audits are clean opinions. One thing that we have seen with other agencies and entities during this time of stress and uncertainty is people don't necessarily put the accurate, the amount of time and effort into internal controls. And the city and agency staff and team has done a great job with that. So I'd just like to say that.
All right, thank you. Jackie, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Tanya summarized everything very well. We are very proud here with management and staff, the way that we were able to spend the city's money through a pandemic. I'm very proud of them.
Well, Kathy, she's on. Do you have anything to add?
No, I just, it's been an unusual year. There is no doubt about it. And I'm just glad we are over and done with it and we will go forward.
All right, thank you for doing such an amazing job.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
It's wonderful hearing how great you all are. So thank you. Any questions from counsel? Counselor Ripley?
I don't have any questions.
Counselor Alexander?
No questions.
Counsel Tracy?
None, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
No question. Thank you for this.
Counsel Tracy? Or Todd, excuse me?
It happens.
I know, I'm looking at faces trying to find you up there. Okay.
And no questions. I just wanted to thank Kathy for all of her hard work and as always, good job.
All right, Counselor Garlington?
No, no. But thank you.
All right. So the only question I had is the net position of $1,101,405. I had people ask me about why that's a negative. And just a short, quick answer?
That, it's a very good question, Mayor, as far as the presentation of that. It looks so unusual. Largely, that is due to the fact that the Urban Renewal Agency is carrying the debt or the financing on the Civic Center. But the asset of the Civic Center is actually within the city. So yes, we will sit in a negative position, but as the tax revenue comes in and the debt service is paid down, that will reduce over the years.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
And what can I add as well? When looking at the city in combination with the total citywide financial statements, that amount is then basically rolled up together with the assets. And so you don't see it on the city's financial statements, just in the Urban Renewal Agency. It's just a accounting reporting nuance essentially.
That's what I figured, the fact that it was a two-year budget and a whole bunch of other things. So just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions from anybody? Well, then I would entertain a motion to accept the Urban 2019-2020 Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Audit. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
The 2018-2020 City, oh, sorry, 1920 Urban Renewal. No, it's the full thing, isn't it? It's the full audit? Is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay, for the full audit. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Counselor Garlington, would you like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Todd and seconded by Counselor Garlington to approve the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2020. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy? Mayor Stempel?
I. The Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2020 has been approved. So at this time, we need to adjourn back to our regular City Council Business Meeting. Could somebody please make a motion to adjourn from our Urban Renewal Meeting and re-adjourn into our regular meeting?
Mayor, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Garlington. Do we have any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman? Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. So at this time, we're going to reconvene to the Gladstone Regular Business Meeting, January 12, 2021 at 7:15 PM. First item back on our regular agenda is number 12, which is City Council Liaison Appointments. And I believe we have somebody from the audience that would like to speak. So why don't we go ahead and get started with that?
We do have, but I do not see. If Linda Neese is an attendee, can you please raise your hand?
I believe Linda had some stuff come up tonight.
Okay.
You'll do, make it.
Thank you, Counselor Ripley.
All right. Well, then let's get on to the council liaison appointments. So this is something that the mayor's historically done for many, many years. Most of the liaison appointments don't really require much work, but there's some that do. So this is, this is how I'm playing it out and we can discuss it. First off, everybody is so busy right now. And over the last four years, I've noticed that, that most of the counselors, just life happens and being really engaged with these liaison appointments is not possible. So I'm going to get rid of the reserve liaison appointments. So if the counselors can't make it, and if you think it's important, make other arrangements. But I just, I don't think that's something that we really need. I'm going to stick with the same basic departments and liaison, liaison groups, like regional committees, I'm already on them. So I'm going to go ahead and stick with them unless there's a couple that that come up that somebody else would like to help with, because there's a lot. C4, Metro, Lipsec, the Lam Falls, the LOX Association, the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee, there's a lot of them. So if there's something that any of you feel an affinity towards, let me know and you guys can help. Business and Civic, which isn't formal meetings, it's just hopping in when necessary. And that would be the Community Festival Outreach, Welcoming New Businesses, Regional Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce, Clackamas County Tourism, Business Alliance. I would like Counselor Tracy Todd and Counselor Greg Alexander to do that because those two seem to be the most active with our local businesses. Senior Center, we can go back on this. Senior Center, I believe they're meeting only quarterly. And with the Senior Center kind of being on hold, I'm not sure if they're even meeting quarterly. So I would like Counselor Mindy Garlington to do that one because she's been kind of active with the Senior Center in the past. Parks and Rec, we're meeting monthly for now. I've been on there for a while and I would love to continue for now. They've got five new members out of seven and there's a lot of heavy lifts. So having some kind of continuity there would probably be good for now, but that can get changed later. Traffic Safety, Counselor Ripley seemed to enjoy that and seems to be a good fit. So well, I'd love to keep him there. Library Board, we don't know what that's going to look like right now. I don't know if it's monthly. I don't know if it's annually. I have no idea. So Counselor Mindy Garlington, since she's been involved with the library in the past, I'd like her there. Public Works, we have it broken down into Storm and Sewer and Water Infrastructure. In the past, I've handled the Storm and Sewer because that was the first group of meetings that I had to do when I became mayor. And then Counselor Tracy's been doing the Water Infrastructure. Storm and Sewer has pretty much gone away. So there really isn't a whole lot going on there, but I'd like to keep Matt on Water because he knows what's been going on and he seems really engaged with that group. Planning, I would like to get rid of the liaison position for planning because it is quasi-judicial. And I see that there could be some issues with conflicts and I don't really see that they need our help. Staff really steps up and helps the planning. If that changes, we can certainly appoint somebody there. Budget and Audit seems to meet maybe once every two years. And since Counselor Garlington's been on Budget and Audit for a long time, a sticker there. School District and Board, we really haven't had a whole lot of interaction with them, but we should. They're going through a lot of changes and I would like to see Counselor Hartman there because she seems to have, well, kind of skin in the game with children that are in the school system. and I think there's a lot of issues that she would be the perfect conduit for with the school district. Police and Fire, it's not a monthly thing, it's just an as-needed, and it seems like there's quite a bit going on there. So, I would like to put Council Alexander on Police and Fire. So, um, discussion, Council Ripley?
I think that all sounds great.
Do you, is it okay with you staying on Traffic Safety?
Yes.
Perfect, good, because I think you're a perfect fit there. Council Alexander?
Yes, that'd be fine with me, I've enjoyed that position, I believe.
Okay, and Business and Civic, it really isn't a lot of work. It's just, I guess it's as, as much work as you want to make it.
Right, not a problem, yeah.
Okay, awesome, Council Tracy?
For me, did you mean me? I say we're talking about the, the business-
Oh, it's like Matt Tracy.
Okay.
Council Tracy, Council Matt Tracy.
No, I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Council Hartman?
Yes, thank you. I just have questions in terms of clarification on the purpose and the intent of these appointments and these positions. Are the, like, descriptions of what our expectations are written anywhere? I mean, correctly from my, I haven't seen it, I didn't see it in our council rules, I didn't see it in our charter about, you know, what the intent of this is. And I think as long as we don't have that, you know, how do we hold each other accountable for, for doing this? And so, I'm, I'm just curious about what, I just want to make sure we're not being redundant. You know, we have chairs and we have department heads now that provide us with monthly reports. So, I'm just curious about what the role is. I mean, I understand, like, the school board and those ones, but the ones that we do have point persons already within. So, I'm just curious how that, that works, and why we don't have it written down anywhere.
Because it's just been something that we've done forever, and it's a person on council that is the conduit directly to those boards and committees, because we can't sit in on every committee. So, instead of all of us getting involved on a monthly basis, we have one person that's responsible for that, to get back to the council and report on what's going on with that committee. We don't require that the minutes be included in our council packet every month, so we really aren't aware of what's going on. And those groups are our advisory committees, so we need to make sure that we stay in contact, and that if they need our support on anything, or if we need them to discuss something and review, we need that conduit, and it's easier if it's just one person, instead of getting information from seven.
Sure, so is the expectation that we provide reports?
Yes, yes.
And is that happening?
Um, we've just started doing it, yes.
The only thing is, I, I just would personally like to be involved with Council Alexander on the police force, and just being involved in learning more about how that works.
Okay, well, it's really not a formal liaison position, it's just as-needed and a conduit, so, okay. Alright, Council Tracy Todd?
Um, you know, I was actually going to sort of talk about what you had talked about, Mayor, about that it's just really hard to engage in multiple things when you're a business owner, and you maybe work evenings like myself, and so-
Yeah.
I'm, I'm more than fine stepping away from a sort of a formal liaison position. Of course, being a business owner, the Business and Civic really interests me. I'd say the majority of my help is still going to be with the Tourism and Strategy Committee that I've been working on. But, you know, maybe Council Alexander and I can sort of chit chat, and we could sort of come up with some ways that we could still be engaging with our local businesses, so.
Perfect, yeah, I knew that it was easier, I mean, everybody's schedule is so crazy these days, and business just seemed to be a perfect fit. And they need so much support from us right now, I mean, everybody's hurting, so, great. Council Garlington?
Yes, I'm all in.
You're all in, alright.
I, I have seen no issue with doing these, at all.
Okay.
Happy to.
Alright, awesome, so that's it, and I will go ahead and get these to Tammy Bannock, and she'll get them all out to the council. Wonderful, okay, next item is number 13, which is discussion about the appointment to the boards, commissions, and committees. So, before we get started, I wanted to do something really quick, and that is to thank all of the volunteers that decided to step down this year. Family, health, life in general gets in the way, and when we have to completely change the way we handle business, it gets hard, it's a big commitment. So, first is Ben Misley, Benjamin Misley, who's been on the Parks and Rec Board now for three years, and he served as the chair. He picked the right three years, because that has been an incredibly robust committee, and he has led it incredibly well. Andrew Labonte served on the Parks and Rec Board for a little, for less than a year, but again, he was in there when it was incredibly active and had some wonderful input on how we can make things better. Bill Preble-
Tammy, you mute yourself?
Mayor, you muted yourself?
Sorry, how did I do that? Okay, so, did you guys hear about Ben and Andrew, or do I need to start all over again? You're Ben, okay. So, next is Andrew Labonte, who was on Parks and Rec Board for less than a year, but he was there during an incredibly active time. There's a lot of great conversations, and he brings a really good insight because of his traffic safety experience. Bill Preble, he was on Parks and Rec for three years, and he was absolutely instrumental in the pickleball launch and all of the improvements. So, that's where he's going to be focusing now, and that's wonderful. Katie Ellerby, she's six years on the Senior Center Advisory Board, and truly one of my favorite people. She never misses words, and she tells me exactly like it is, and it's great. And I hope she finds other things to volunteer for. Malachi, and I'd say his last name, but I mess it up every single time. He's been on Planning Commission for six years now, and I had the honor of serving with him. His pers- per, his perspective is unique, he is so detail-oriented, and I just valued everything that he had to say. Len Nelson, two years on the Traffic Safety Advisory Board. He's volunteered forever, and he is an inspiration in teaching us that volunteering is a duty, it's something that we should all do, and he certainly walked the talk. Linda Cosgrove, 14 years on the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, 14 years. I'm on Historical Society with her, so I'm glad that she's going to continue on in some capacity, and I'm sure of the love she has for our city. Elaine Herman, seven years on the Senior Center Advisory Board. I didn't really get a chance to know her, because I didn't go to many of their meetings, but thank you for the time you spent. Colette Umbrus, seven years on the Senior Center Advisory Board, and seven years on the Budget Committee. She's such a huge advocate for our city, and I certainly hope that we can find other things that she can volunteer for. Darren Williams, less than a year on Planning Commission, short time, but much appreciated. Planning is unique, and it takes an awful lot of time, and I don't think people realize that until they get there. So, we've got little awards that we're going to be handing out to them, certificates, so thank them all very, very much. Alright, so, in the past, we have done a graph on a board, and we all go through and we name who our picks are. Council Tracy had previously talked about having an interview process for the appointments. Right now, we have 28 applications for 26 openings. There's a couple committees where there's more people that apply than the openings. So, staff, what would you like us to do, or do you have any comments?
First of all, today, we did have a withdrawal of the application from Riley Hartman on the Planning Commission due to a conflict of interest. So, you have 27 applications for 26 positions. I would guess that that's a record, that's fantastic. You have a lot of people interested in volunteering. We are prepared to do votes tonight, if you would like. We have spreadsheets that we can put up if you want to appoint to certain committees tonight, and we can also set up interviews in the next couple of weeks. One idea you might consider is you have some committees that didn't receive enough applications to fill the positions, so maybe you want to look at accepting those. And you have three committees that received more applications for the positions, and maybe if you did want to do interviews, you focus on that. Again, we've prepared the spreadsheets, and if the city council wants to do some appointments, we can, but I think we really need to have a consensus on which way to move forward.
Okay. My concern is that everybody's so busy, there's an awful lot of people to interview, and I just don't think that we're in a position to do that right now. I want us to get these committees full, so that we can get going. Since we are looking at the next two-year budget and work plans, I think we need to get started as soon as possible. Council Ripley, what would you like to do?
Well, we've been talking about sitting down, having a discussion about what we're going to do, and how we're going to interview, or what, what all we're going to do, and we still haven't done that. But, pretty much everything we've talked about before, we haven't accomplished. A couple of my thoughts are that there's only so many, so many volunteer positions in the city, and if we're preventing some people from being involved, because other people are on two or three committees, I'd like to see only one, person on only one committee, unless there is a need, we couldn't get anybody else. But just to make sure we could really get out there and get as many people involved as we can. But I would still like to do some sort of an interview process, so we actually know who these people are. And I do have a couple of notes here. A few people were asked why they haven't gotten involved, and the, the answers are kind of, kind of funny, and one of those repercussions, they're afraid of getting involved. Quite a few people think you have to be friends with somebody on council or on another committee to get on, and a lot of people feel they're not qualified. And I'm not sure if we're putting in the advertisements for this, that there's no qualifications. But if people think they're not qualified, or they're, it's only a friend thing, then we're, we're not doing ourselves any good.
Alright, Council Alexander?
Yeah, I sort of, I, I sort of agree on that. I, I like the, I like the fact to thank everybody for volunteering, everybody that stepped up and volunteered. And I think on the committees where we have, like, three for five and four for five, I think, I think just because they volunteered, they should get, get on that committee. Now, the ones where we have six for five, or five for two, I, I could look at some of the names and not know, so I don't know that I'm putting the most qualified person up there. So, an interview wouldn't be bad, I mean, to know who we're putting up there and see if we're getting the best person for the job. So, the ones that we can fill, and fill them all, and everybody's happy, and everybody that volunteered gets them, but the other ones, I think, I'd like to know more about the people I'm, I'm picking. So, I, to be able to talk to them would be, I think, great.
Okay, Council Tracy?
Mayor, for the moment, I want to defer, and I'd like to listen to the other councillor's thoughts, please.
Alright, Council Hartman?
Thank you, um, and again, thank you for everyone who applied. I know that it's not an easy decision to make. My thought is that we definitely should do some interviews, and I had a community discussion that one of our community members had a great idea, and the, the platform would be similar to how Clackamas County Local 1159 did their interviews during campaign season, where we would have one of our administrators perform the interviews on Zoom with a, you know, list of 10 equitable questions, that are the same for everybody, and perform that interview and record it, and then email it out to the council, and then we can all watch that individually, and then we can remain taking a vote on that way. And this way, we get to learn who these new voices are, and, and for people who, like myself, don't know some of the, the other voices, to get to know those people. And so, I don't know if that would be a quorum, if we're all watching the same interviews, but the thought would be to do it similar to that platform, where, you know, maybe Administrator Betts does the interviews and records them, and then emails them out to all of us, and then we watch the interviews, and then we vote at the next meeting. I think that this would remove bias from an interview panel, and, you know, we don't want to be in situations that we've been in before. I think we got to make sure that we give everyone the benefit to, to show us who they are. It's hard to decide off of a piece of paper without meeting these people. So, I, I mean, I would vote interviews on everything, and I don't think that we should choose everyone who's applied, even just because, you know, we have open positions. We just have to make sure we're making the right decisions.
Alright, Council Todd?
Um, I, you know, originally, I was not that for interviews, because I have seen interviews that I've done, you know, when we were in council chambers and the full dais, and, and people who I know that really were capable and, you know, totally up for the job, maybe didn't interview well with a dais and people in the gallery, and not knowing what was going to be asked. And I know that if I was volunteering for a position, I don't know if I'd be putting myself up there for that. So, I like the idea of that we're, if we're going to interview, maybe someone could just glow in something that is just sort of, you know, five to 10 questions that are just very basic, where they're just answering the person on the other end of, the other end of the screen, and maybe that's sort of a nice way to do it, mostly if it's, it's it's equitable, it's fair, it's the same for everybody, might be the best with that. I do feel, though, that if we have, you know, not enough people for the positions open, I'm all about that we should also take people that want to volunteer. So, I'm, I'm sort of torn between that, I don't know if that helps at all. But originally, it was not for the interviews, but it, Council Hartman's idea is something that might sort of help that situation.
Alright, so do you think interviews on everything, or just the ones where we have more applicants than positions?
Probably just more applicants where we have positions, is where I would land with that.
Okay, thank you, Council Garlington?
So, I'm going to be the one that says, I disagree with all of you. I have been on the budget, I've been on the audit, I've been on the Parks Board, I've gotten my name picked out of a hat for council appointments. I have gone through the Charter, the Charter Committee with Mr. Mercero, and I think that was about it from this group, sort of, anyway. I appreciated the fact that the, the people in Gladstone that were on city council at the time took a chance on somebody who was a mom, you know, fresh off the baseball field, didn't know a whole lot about anything, they didn't have to see my face to judge me. I think, going back to Councilor Todd's comment, honestly, if I would have had to thought that I was going to go through an interview process, I would have never, ever, ever put my name on anything. To think that somebody was going to sit in front of me and judge me like that, no, thank you. So, I think that in the last 20-some years that I've been going to city council meetings in December, that it's kind of exciting to read all the papers. People get appointed, they may have been neighbors I knew, they may have been neighbors I didn't know, but I felt like our city council was giving people a chance to move forward and make a difference in Gladstone without judgment. And, um, quite frankly, I'm not comfortable with interviews. So, I would have to say no, that I, I, I'm all for giving someone a chance without judgment. I, I will take them on their merit, what they wrote on a piece of paper, that's all.
Alright, thank you, Council Tracy?
So, I appreciate Counselor Garlington's comments along with the other councillors. I understand that position, and where, how you might feel judged. I don't think it's judgment as much as it is just finding out what your, what your knowledge base is, or what a person's knowledge base is. I'm, I'm in favor of both. I like the Zoom interview idea, but I don't know that all the burden should be put on the city administrator. You know, there's a possibility of us having a candid conversation via Zoom, and again, Jackie, I don't know the administrative rules behind this, but we could have a candid conversation via Zoom with 10 equitable questions, and the city councillors could take up some of that slack, perhaps, and be the interviewer, and share with their council colleagues the results of the interview. I don't know that it's necessarily judgment, because we're all going to see the same video, and everybody will have their own outcome with regard to how they land on the candidate. I'm not a fan of the interview process, because the interview process, I, I was in- I'm not a fan of the interview process because the interview process, I, I was involved in that and the appointment process, and it didn't really go well. So I kind of, I'm leaning towards where Mindy is for a lot of the positions because I think the ones that we have that are three to five, two to five, what have you, there's enough information, I think, for those positions to be able to choose those folks. But I would agree that Counselor Hartman has a good idea. And that might be the best way to do it is to share an interview process via Zoom recording with the council. Every councillor would have the opportunity to do a follow-up with the interviewee. Um, and so we could contact them through emails and talk to them, get to know them a little bit and get to know where they're, where they're headed policy-wise, what their, you know, city, what their aspirations for the city are. So I'm going, it's a long way there, but I'm, I'm kind of caught in between.
I would just like to add one more thing. Um, a couple of years ago, the, um, I can't remember the appointment. I can just remember being in, in the council chambers, of course, in the old building. And, um, it was November, December, they were appointing people. And somebody on the council mentioned that as they called people's names, that they stand up. And again, I'm just going to say, that's, that's, it's, it's like, it was almost embarrassing that people had to stand up to prove themselves, maybe, what, maybe what they looked like is that what, what was happening? I mean, that's how I felt when they were doing, when that was happening. Um, I know it may have not had been the intent, but the feeling was there, that's all I'm saying.
Can I say one thing, Mindy?
Yeah.
You made the comment that you disagree that because you were a mom. And I wouldn't care if somebody was a single mom. If, if a single mom applied for a position, they're probably one of the better people because a single mom can manage their household, their kids, that's a big job. There's a couple, wife was sick, we had three kids when they were younger and I stayed home and took care of them. That's, that's above a lot of people's ability level. So making the comment that you're surprised you got picked because you were a mom, nobody cares. Some moms are some of the stronger people that are going to get.
And I hear what you're saying.
We have to, we can't throw these accusations and throw these guesses around. The, our goal is to, is the longevity of the city of Gladstone. Our goal is not to play little games right now, is to make sure that Gladstone's here another 100 years. And if it takes, if it takes a whole council of single moms, I would support that 100% if I knew that was going to put Gladstone here for another 100 years. So I, saying that, feeling that it was a tack on you, I, I don't think you should feel it's a tack on you or whatever you're saying. I think you're, you're picking up perceptions from people or there's something different going on there because your sex or how many kids you have doesn't matter to the success of Gladstone.
Okay, well, you've clearly gotten wrong what I said. But what I meant to say, I suppose, was that I was coming into volunteer after having been a mom and all of that. And I didn't have a lot of experience. And I just flat appreciated the fact that the city council gave me a chance to be a volunteer for the city and to work with people that, you know, I could get to know them better and, and do good for the city. So there was, you know, no, that's all.
But anyway, I, I just, the, the way you said it, it sounded.
My apologies.
Yes, but I, I, I'm pretty sure everybody at the council would feel the same way. They don't care what sex you are, what race you are, what color. You could be 15 feet tall. I think everybody wants the best for Gladstone. And that's what we need to keep in our, the back of our head. So it's, whatever, whatever the best position for the, for the job is what we want.
But can I just say something also that, um,
Yes.
That we want the best position to be like, okay, the Audit Committee. Three people stepped up, said, I'll donate my time, my energy to volunteer for this. There's, we need five, three stepped up. Those three, uh, there should be, uh, you know, they should, I think they should get it. That's just sort of common sense wise. When you get to where there's only five positions and there's six people and, and you do it on a, no, no, you know, an interview or whatever, that no one knows who you are or sees it, just questions got answered. So there's no judgment. I don't think it's judgment as much as qualifications. But I think the three, three people applied for five, all three should get to, they, they stepped up to volunteer. They should, they should get appointed. The four for five, they should get appointed. I think that's just to me, just the most general best way to do it. Now, you've got five positions and six people? Of course, we want to put the five best people on there. So whatever we do to do that, that's, that's one way. The interview process or, or doing it with just answering the questions. Nobody even knows who answered the questions, you know what I mean? You just read the, the, read the paper and say, I think this is the most qualified. And then you figure out who that matched to. See what I'm saying? All, that way there's no bias, there's no anything. It's just, this is the best qualified for the job. I picked this one. And then you find out who it was. That's, that's one way of doing it. But I think the people that stepped up with the, you know, five positions, only three, three applied, I say, I say they should all get to be on it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Councilor Ripley, you had your hand up.
Yes, I think, I think what Greg has is a great idea. And it also enabled us to work into this interview process a little slower. Instead of doing 30 of them now, maybe we only have to do five. And we can figure out the process on a smaller group. And we can get our positions filled and that lines, that sets us up for the future.
Okay.
I'm not going to burden right now.
So my comment is going to be that, yes, I think for committees like the Planning Commission, that interviewing is a smart idea because those people are making legally binding decisions. And we want to make sure we, we absolutely have the right people in those positions. Um, I would, I am out there every chance I get begging for volunteers because we do not have enough. And whatever we can do to hook them, if it's just a little position on one of our little committees that'll get them excited and passionate about being involved, that's what we need to do. And so I also agree that if there's three for five positions, those people need to get in there unless there's something so blatantly obvious that there, that there, it's just not going to work. I see that. But, um, we need to encourage people every chance we get. Cause I was one of those 20 years ago for traffic safety. No experience whatsoever. They appointed me and now I'm the mayor of the city because I, that one little thing hooked me and got me passionate about volunteering. And that's what we need to encourage. So Councilor, City Administrator Betts was going to say something when I rudely interrupted you, sorry.
No, it's okay. I think, um, a couple of thoughts here that might incorporate a lot of what you guys are expressing. If you're comfortable, you can go through audit, budget and traffic safety tonight and try to make those appointments. For Parks, Planning and the Senior Center, you know, what a lot of municipalities do, I know you talked about 10 questions, a facilitated interview, but a lot of places too are just saying, hey, uh, tell us in two minutes why you want to be a volunteer and send us your soundbite. So you don't even have to have staff involved with that. They could just on Zoom, record a little video or on their phone. They could send it to the city. If Counselor Garlington didn't want to interview, she doesn't have to watch those videos. But at least if you guys are looking at the videos for those three committees, you're still coming back in an open session, not knowing who you're going to pick. And then we would vote on them like we might be doing tonight for the other committees. That's just a couple of thoughts that it sounds like, um, it doesn't sound like everybody wants to do the interviews. But trying to come to a consensus is what we're trying to do this evening.
Okay, so if we did something like that, which actually I think is a great idea. I mean, even if it's just, why do you want to be a volunteer? And maybe one other question, something simple. But I need to make sure that this isn't going to take up a lot of staff time because you guys were shorthanded, we're under COVID restrictions. How is this going to affect you guys? Is it going to be simple, hard? Do we have to bring people in to do extra work?
No, I think, um, it's a volunteer position and these are people that care about Gladstone. And if you're only talking about interviewing for the three boards, we could walk them through how to do that. Actually, two minutes is a long time for a video to get to know somebody. You sometimes know within 30 seconds. But if they sent us their video, then we could distribute them to the city council. And again, you don't have to watch them if you don't want to. But that kind of gets a little bit of what everybody is asking for.
And then will we make accommodation for the people that don't quite, that aren't tech savvy?
Yeah.
There's one on here that I know that's not.
Yes, we can help them do that either even on their iPhone or if we wanted to make a computer available for one of them to do that, we would help them with that.
Okay, so then I'm going to ask everybody, we'll do a consensus, that we go ahead and appoint to the Audit, Budget and Traffic Safety Committees and that we do this interview process or soundbite process that Counselor Betts is suggesting for Parks and Rec, Planning and Senior Center. Do you guys understand that? Yeah? Okay, Councilor Ripley.
Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to make you aware, there is a attendee that has a hand up and I'm not sure if you want to acknowledge or not.
Um, we don't have anybody that submitted?
Correct, they did not submit prior to the meeting, but their hand is currently up.
Okay, yeah, no, they didn't submit before the meeting. So Councilor Ripley?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great. Councilor Alexander?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
And I'll say yes also. Sorry, keep looking because the faces are all over and I have to picture in my mind where people are going to be sitting one day. Make sure I don't forget anybody. All right, so then we'll go ahead and we'll just start with the Audit Committee. And do we want each, Jackie, do we want each councillor to name who they choose so that we have it formal? Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to do a shared screen right now. So what's going to pop up and everybody should be able to see is a spreadsheet with each elected official's name and the applicant. And then our city recorder will call each elected official. And we'll, uh, pick, we only have three applications for five positions. And we'll see what the majority comes out with on the Audit Committee.
All right.
Please bear with me as we're doing this, just a moment, please.
Yeah, Zoom is an interesting platform.
Are you all able to see the board's committees and commissions spreadsheet?
Yes. All right, go ahead and start calling.
So Audit Committee, we have three. Um, and we'll start with Counselor Alexander.
Yes, I, so I, I would agree, all three.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes, no, yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Um, yes, no, yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, yes, yes. All right, so Sierra Cook, Neil Reisner and Drew Silla-Wieland, also known as Drew, are on the Audit Committee. Right, next is the Budget Committee. And I have a question. So Riley Hartman, did he withdraw from budget or just planning?
Planning Commission.
That's planning, okay.
Yeah, so I, I, I would like to abstain myself when speaking about this. And I don't know if I need to, Riley Hartman is my husband, in case you don't know that. Um, I, do I need to remove myself from this whole thing or?
We just won't, um, well, Tammy just won't call on you if you want to recuse yourself?
I will recuse myself from voting for him.
Okay. All right, so we have, um, four applicants for five positions.
Okay, uh, Counselor Garlington? Counselor Todd?
Yes, 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 yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes, 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 no.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes, 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 and yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, yes, yes?
Yes, no. Correct.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, 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 yes. That's four. All right, so Sierra Cook, Michael Milch, Neil Reisner and Riley Hartman are on the Budget Committee. Um, next is Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. We have three applicants for five positions. Bill Osburn, Nathan Page and Ernest Mike Wiley.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Tracy?
No, yes, yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes, girl.
I'm sorry?
Yes, for all three, please.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, yes, yes. So Bill Osburn, Nathan Page and Ernest Mike Wiley. And Ernest Mike Wiley is a road geek, so that would be perfect for him. All right, so then, um, Jackie, you'll get back to us on the other interviews for Parks and Rec, Planning and Senior Center Advisory Board.
I do have a question.
If we target to have interviews back, um, by the end of January so that you can make appointments at the February meeting? Okay. All right, appointments in February. Okay, Counselor Hartman, you had a comment?
Never mind, you answered it, thank you.
I had a question.
Yes.
Um, will current board, uh, commission chairs or such be involved in the interview selection or process at all? I mean, are they going to be listening to those as well? Do we have all board chairs already in place or would those all change?
They would all change.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why we need to get all these committees loaded with people so they can make that decision and then start working on their, um, their work plans.
Okay.
All right, so that's it with item number four, or number 13. Item number 14 is the process for replacing the municipal judge, Judge Beluth, who I'd like to thank. She's been here for many, many years and that's, um, can't imagine being a judge, yikes. It's too bad that she wasn't able to really appreciate her, her new office and the new chambers here at City Hall. Um, so as part of our judge services, we have three judges that have already been vetted for pro temp surfaces, services, is that correct, Jackie?
Yes, so today was Judge Haines' last court appearance. In her current contract that she has with the city council, she was required to name pro temp judges that could act on her behalf if she was not able to. In your packet, you will see three of them. Um, in conversations with Judge Gray, he also falls under the same new ruling with the consortium that caused Judge Haines to no longer want to be able to do both jobs, be a, a, um, part of the public defense consortium and a judge. So he's not going to be able to continue as a pro temp for Gladstone any longer. Uh, Judge Shepley, it would be very difficult, given his current schedule assignments, to carry on a pro temp judge assignment. But Judge Lindgram is interested and willing to do that. Um, and so in doing a little bit of background for you, she has provided the city with an updated resume that I can email out to the city council. Uh, she is the municipal court judge for the city of St. Helens currently. She's also the city prosecutor for the city of Malala and city of Happy Valley. She is in good standing with the Oregon State Bar, which is required in the contract as well. And so one solution could be that you want to go ahead and name Judge Lindgram as the pro temp judge. And you could direct me to prepare a contract for the mayor to sign. And then you guys could determine if you wanted to do that for perhaps a six-month period until you decide what you want to do. do that for perhaps a six-month period until you decide what you wanna do for permanency of that position.
Okay, um, Counselor Garlington, do you have any questions, or, or do you agree with this process, potentially?
I agree with the process.
Alright, Counselor Todd?
I agree.
Counselor Hartman?
I agree.
Counselor Tracy?
I agree.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes, I agree.
Uh, Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Alright, and I agree too. Do you want us to take a vote, or is that consensus good enough? You're muted, Jackie.
Sorry, I, I believe that I have the information that I need to go ahead and draft the contract. We're gonna use the same compensation that we do for Judge Haines, and, uh, shall we do a six-month contract as pro temp and then revisit that?
That's what I think, that gives us time. Anybody else want something different? I don't see anything or hear anything, so, alright. Um, next item is fifteen, City Administrator Employment Agreement. I don't know, do we want Chad or somebody else to, or you could give us?
I'm happy to step in for, for the city. Again, uh, Mayor Counsel's Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. As those of you who are on council may recall, and for those who are new to council, last year the city amended the City Administrator's contract to add language which states that considerations shall be given on an annual basis to an increase in salary as is given to the city's other city management. And so, uh, this contract was entered into January 11th last year, so we're just at a year right now, so it's time for that sort of annual review. And, um, basically what the contract requires is that the council have a discussion about giving a salary increase on the same terms as is given to other city management employees. And so for your background, um, other city management employees, unless they've topped out at their, um, at their level, they are eligible for a five percent increase every twelve months. And so at this point, you know, the, the issue before the council is whether the council should give Jackie a five percent increase based on this new language in the contract. Just for further background information, um, the contract also provides Jackie with an annual COLA in the same amount as the city's other management employees. So she did receive a COLA, but this would be in addition to the COLA, that it would be on the same terms and conditions basically as other city management employees. So that's the question before you tonight. Um, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have, but it's, it's pretty simple. That's the extent of the language in the contract, and, and that's the, the standard that's given to other city management employees.
Alright, um, Counselor Ripley, any questions or concerns?
I don't have any questions or concerns.
Um, Counselor Alexander?
No questions or concerns?
Counselor Tracy?
None. Um, one question for Chad. Chad, did you, did you say the amount, percentage? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Uh, five percent.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hartman?
No questions.
Counselor Todd?
No, no questions.
Counselor Garlington?
No questions.
Alright, well, I think she deserves that and more. This has been such a crazy year. What she's had to do in the last ten months, eleven months, has just been incredible. So, um, and 2021 does not look like it's getting any better. So, uh, yeah. Um, so then, um, I guess we need to take a motion, is that correct, Chad? We need a motion to do this?
Correct.
consensus? Okay, I would, go ahead.
Question for Chad, can we amend the amount at this point, and it only carries for the full year, correct? Would we be revisiting this again next year, Chad?
Yeah, under the current language in the agreement, that you're required to review this on an annual basis.
So, uh, as a council member, we would, we could potentially suggest, like I could call for seven percent in a motion, friendly amendment to it?
You could, there's no, there's no motion on the table, so you can make a motion for, you're required to consider five percent, you can make a motion for above five percent if you want, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want to make that motion?
I'd like to. I, I, I believe Jackie's gone beyond, above and beyond, uh, this year, and she's kept us together. She got us into a new City Hall that was completed during this pandemic. Um, things have settled down, she's moved a lot of policy forward. I would suggest that we, I would recommend her move that we give her seven percent in this year.
I would second. I would second.
A motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Alexander. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any hands, and I don't hear any voices. So Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Absolutely.
Counselor Tracy?
Absolutely is a good.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Awesome, thank you very much. Jackie, you deserve it and more. Alright, next is item, the new item number sixteen, so if Counselor Hartman could, um, clarify what that is?
Sure, yeah, here's the thing, um, we've had, you know, I've had several people reach out to me asking why, you know, the City of Gladstone has not sent out a statement condemning the insurrection that happened at the Capitol, and several other people asking what our plans are for the safety of our community and our businesses and our city buildings. Um, I think that we should be mindful of everybody's feelings right now and be putting out a statement of encouragement and reassurance that we are here for them. And, you know, I haven't heard of anything, I don't know if anyone else has, but, you know, you see other counties putting out statements, and I'm wondering, and so are many of my constituents wondering when we are going to do that and if we are going to be doing that.
Okay, so it's just strictly the proclamation of some sort of statement about the insurrection, that's what sixteen is?
It's, it's more of, um, sending out a reassuring email to our community that our local law enforcement and we are here to listen and keep them safe, as well as our local businesses.
Okay, Jackie, do you want to fill us in on what we're doing as far as security goes?
Sure.
So I know that you've been talks with the, well, regionally.
So it's kind of a two, two-part question, and, uh, the, the first part is why hasn't a statement been made? I think the timing to have that conversation is good, so thank you for bringing that up. Uh, staff doesn't take sides or make political statements, but the City Council can direct staff to prepare something. And so I think that we do need to have some discussions about how do we want to provide that guidance so that I, as the City Administrator, can prepare something on behalf of the city to do that. Other counties do that, they have public relations, um, departments that prepare statements, but for us, what would be helpful is to have guidance from the elected officials, that you have a consensus, that you, this is important enough that you wanna make a statement. In regards to what are we doing to prepare for this, first of all, we, we take the threat very seriously. I meet with the police chief and the fire chief, uh, first things in the morning and usually before we end our day, but I'd like to invite in our police chief Schmerber to talk a little bit, uh, without getting into details that he can't reveal about how we are preparing for the inauguration next week.
Hi. Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We see your name huge across the screen.
Well, good. Um, yeah, a little bit about, uh, what's going on, um, throughout the region, throughout the country. We're fully aware, we pay a lot of attention, this organization does regarding the security and safety of, of the Gladstone community, and we take that very seriously. So with that said, we look at and we look for intelligence, we look for a lot of different things, we communicate with our partner agencies and so on throughout the county, uh, throughout the region, um, looking for tips, looking for leads, looking for anything that might come into play, Gladstone might come into play. So, we do take it seriously, we are prepared, we're fully staffed. Um, when I say fully staffed, to the best of our ability. Um, so I, I guess I'm not quite sure what, I'm not quite sure how to answer the question any better than I have so far, so.
Okay, thank you. I know that they're talking about it on a regional level, and you're connected with all of those folks, so it's not something that hasn't been discussed. I know I've received many phone calls as well.
Mayor, didn't the mayor's, Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium put out a statement condemning the insurrection?
Yes, they did, and I believe that went out yesterday or today?
And you're on that, correct?
Yes. Yes.
You didn't withdraw from the consortium prior to the press?
I withdrawn from the consortium, but not, but I'm on that statement.
So you do support the statement?
Yes, yes, and my name's on it, yes.
I think that, uh, the community doesn't understand that yet, so again, you do support that statement.
Yeah, and my name is on it, it's clear as day, I think, where I'm like number six on it, so, yeah.
Well, the consortium hasn't released it yet, to the best of my knowledge, and it's
Um, my understanding is they were doing it today.
Okay.
Or maybe it was yesterday.
We just want clarity, Mayor, that you do support that statement.
Yes, and my name is on it because of that, yes. I withdrew from the consortium because I've been on it for four years, it's really expensive. It used to be legislative, the meetings are in the middle of the day, which I absolutely can't attend, um, and they've been charging me for lunch every month that I've never been to a meeting. So it's, um, you know, the legislative piece is really important to me, but if I can't go to the meetings, why spend the, you know, five hundred thousand, it's, it's like a thousand dollars a year right now. I get all the information that I need other than that, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, um.
I also want to offer just one idea here, because I, I understand, um, timing is of the essence sometimes when people do wanna make statements. And Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but an individual counselor can make a statement without the full City Council, is that correct?
Correct, the, the City Councilors can make statements on their own, or the Council as a body can authorize a counselor to make a statement or make a statement on behalf of the city. If a counselor is making a statement on their own, they should either just use their name and identify themselves as from the city, or if they wanna use their title such as John Doe, uh, City Counselor, City of Gladstone, you wanna make sure that in the communication somewhere that it is clear that your title is being used for identification purposes only, so that it doesn't make it appear that you are speaking on behalf of the city.
Okay, so I come back to the point where we set our agendas a week in advance, and we try to be as transparent as possible, and I know that there's always emergencies and things that come up, but there's a process, and we all need to be thoughtful in our decisions, and we need documentation and information to support those decisions, and we also need to allow residents the opportunity to weigh in on the decisions that we make. So that's where I stand on this one. Um, I don't know what the council wants to do, so I'm gonna walk, walk through everybody. Counselor Ripley, what would you like to do?
I would like to know exactly, I, I think if I had actually read this document we're talking about, I'll definitely support anything, um, but I think having that, like you're saying, hold it, this isn't an emergency situation, is it? Hey, does this have to be done by today or tomorrow? I, it'd be nice, read what we're doing and leave the emergencies for actual emergency type of things to add something to the agenda, but I think unless it's something that can't wait until the next meeting, then that's a little bit different, but I don't see this as being an emergency thing, but I would like to, to have the opportunity to read everything and know what I'm supporting.
Alright.
We need clarification, Mayor, I didn't think we had an action here. I thought this was an informational discussion, am I incorrect, Counselor?
Well, it sounds like Counselor Hartman wants us to make a decision on making some kind of a statement while we haven't done it, so I'm asking the counselors what they would like to do.
Well, I believe you, as a civic leader of the city, have made a statement in the region.
On behalf of myself.
Well, as a.
As part of the Metro Mayor's Consortium, yes.
But you represent the city as a civic leader of the city.
In some people's eyes, yes.
Wow, you're just, I'm getting curveballs all night long.
No, I'm not referring to you at all in that.
Well, no, I'm not thinking you're referring to me, Mayor. I, what I'm saying is, I think you probably have satisfied it, it's just that it hasn't been relayed to our community that you made this statement, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It may be satisfied that the statement coming from the city and the civic leader in the city, and it's a very strong statement, and in fact, I'd like to read it during business from the council, maybe that would be satisfactory, and maybe the rest of this was fairly much informational about security of the city during the inauguration day. I'm just asking, Counselor Hartman, sorry.
Okay, so Counselor Alexander?
I, I gotta agree with Counselor Ripley, this is, this is sort of a last minute thing, I don't, I don't know enough about it, I do not have enough information, I, I believe we need to, to, to support things, I just, I would like to know more before I say we have to do that, and, and if Matt's point is valid, then I think we've, we've already satisfied it.
Okay, Counselor Hartman?
Yeah, I, I understand, um, that we set the agenda a week ago, but a week ago, the incident has not happened yet. Um, this happened six days ago, and I think what I would like us to do is come together as a council to let our community know that we condemn the actions that happened, and that we do not support that. Um, I appreciate Chief Schmerber coming on and telling and reassuring everyone that there is a plan, but I don't understand why we need to discuss that we, as a council, condemn what happened six days ago.
You don't understand why the council would have to agree to make a statement of that so, of that sort?
Correct, I don't understand, I mean, what more information, or what more research do you need to say that you don't agree or you condemn, we condemn as a city, the events that happened last Wednesday?
Okay. Um, alright, it's, it is a council decision, so Counselor Todd?
Well, I just feel like this whole question, subject sort of all over the board as far as what, uh, we're looking for consensus on, um, I mean, I, I, I totally condemn the insurrection of her capital, of course, and, um, I, I know, I understand the process of how we get that information out. It was six days ago, what, we're a week away now from inauguration day. Um, I know a lot of people are scared, a lot of people are really, they don't, they don't know Chief Schmerber, they don't know that, that things are gonna be taken care of, and that we've got that support, and so I, you know, I know that I reached out to, um, City Administrator Betts on Wednesday, and I was just like, is everything good on the local front, you know, sort of, and, and she ended up, you know, saying yes, and then she, we got an email at the end of the day saying that everything was being, you know, monitored and everybody was ready to go. That brought a lot of peace to me, so, but we were the only ones that got that. So I think maybe having something that our citizens can know, Chief John's on it, you know, we're on it, we're, you know, we're not, it's, it's a frightening time for a lot of people, so, um, I'm not really sure what the consensus needs to be on, if we need to do a proclamation, or if the proclamation's already been done by the name adding to the Metro Mayor's Consortium. I don't know.
Okay, so you think that we need to get the information out as far as the security goes, so that people feel more at ease?
I don't think it would be a bad thing at all, I mean, I think people just wanna know, I mean, there, there were people in the Capitol that assumed that there was, um, you know, locking doors that would, would shut, and, you know, all of these things, and there's a lot of things that you assume in your life.
Yeah.
It's just nice to know that the people in charge, the people watching, are just, you know, on it, and, and I think at this point, when you're in sort of this kind of a time with the pandemic and such, there's over, over, you know, information, you know, just, oh, information overload, it's not a bad thing, I don't think it's bad for people to know that.
Right, you want it to come from a credible source, instead of the people that are,
Right.
you know, making this a Q and O, or whatever the heck.
No, totally, I just think it, it'd be, you know, for us to have just a, just a little blurb, it doesn't have to, you know, Jackie's a great wordsmith, I'm sorry, Jackie, give me more.
Well, and, and I think, again, we have, we have two items here, one, it sounds like Counselor Tracy's gonna bring up under Business from the Council to read that statement.
Mm-hmm.
The other is, yes, as I continue to meet with the chiefs and we get closer to the inauguration, we are gonna be sending out that reassuring, call us if you have any concerns, so we can take care of that public message, yes.
Thank you.
I just go back to the wildfires, when we posted our evacuation routes.
Yes.
So people knew that we had a plan. You know, and unfortunately, most of the other cities didn't do that, so we, we really knocked it out of the ballpark on that one, but, alright, so you're thinking the security issue, we need to have that posted. Alright, Counselor Garlington?
I'm gonna agree with, uh, Counselor.
I'm gonna agree with Counselor Ripley. I and go with what the city decides to do. I'm fine with that.
Decide what the city decides to do.
Put out a statement.
I know. This is two different things. So yes, the security issue, put something out.
As a, on the security issue, yes, I'm fine with that.
And a proclamation or?
I'm not real comfortable with a proclamation. I haven't read it. So I don't, what am I signing? Is that what I feel like?
Okay, Jackie, what would you recommend that we do?
So staff's gonna prepare a Gladstone is calm message and leading up to the inauguration. But again, I think Counselor Tracy said he was going to read the MMC statement into the record. I think that is the statement that he's talking about, not a separate proclamation that needs to be vetted.
Counselor Tracy, is that what you would like to do, or do you want us to make a separate statement?
Well, I didn't feel like another statement needed to be made, Mayor. You agreed to this statement from the MMC.
Okay. Counselor Hartman, is that gonna be okay if we do it this way?
I think that's great. I just want us all to show a united front, that we are all working together and wanting to keep our community safe and that we're here for them.
All right. Okay, so that is item number 16. Let me get my glasses so I can see where we are. Do we have any business carried forward?
No, thank you.
All right, so we have business from the audience, and we have a couple people that are speaking. Tammy, could you call them forward, please?
Yes, I will. The first is Sierra Cook. And I believe she has been unmuted here.
Hi, can you guys see me?
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. That's good enough. Well, hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I asked for time during this council meeting to ask to hear from Chief Schmerber about our city's readiness in case we see additional violence and civil unrest in the days leading up to the inauguration. People are scared, and I'm reassured to hear from Chief Schmerber that the police department is preparing for potential violence. I think Counselor Todd put it correctly when she said that our residents don't know that we're prepared. I think there is value for the city and/or the police department to communicate with the public, potentially via social media, and just let residents know that the city and police are aware of safety concerns. You know, that you're potentially asking for information about potential incidents that could come up over the weekend and are ready to respond. I think this is a really, we saw some really serious violent behavior in the last week. I think everybody's pretty shook, and I'd really appreciate to see our leaders acknowledging the risk and the danger here.
All right, thank you. Next.
Next is Angela Riley.
Hello. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm looking forward to the new council and want to welcome you, the new counselors. And just to say that I'm looking forward to a new leaf in city council and how things are done. I'm hopeful and, sorry, my notes are really sloppy. I'm hopeful we're eager to shed the methods of the past and hope this council can collaborate with one another and with the community. There were dirty tactics done in the past, and those were for the express purpose of sabotaging others on the council. And the community hasn't missed this, and we're watching. So we're having faith in this new council that those things will not continue, that council, including the mayor, will collaborate with one another and help each other out and have each other's backs. No more throwing each other under the bus in the paper or other things that have been done, sneaky things, but helping each other to make sure the forms and deadlines and things are met instead of trying to catch each other out. So that was what I wanted, I mean, I was hoping for that to be more positive. But the other thing I wanted to say, I mean, because I only have three minutes, and there's two topics here. The security thing is a really real thing. A lot of people are scared and seeing a lot of stuff that is scary. We've had some specific people targeted in Gladstone by name and for drive-bys. And that makes you nervous. So it's really important. I loved hearing from Chief Schmerber. It was kind of weird not to see his face while he's talking. And I don't know if other staff are allowed to have their picture shown like the council members are while they're sharing. But I think that would be a much better thing for the confidence of the people to be able to see the police chief when he's sharing in this council meeting. So that might be something for Jackie to look at, being able to get that on there. So, yeah, that's all. I just hope we can make it through this next month.
Thank you. Next.
Next is Kelly Monahan.
Sorry about that. This is Kelly Monahan. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to speak with you. I think most of my questions have been answered. I do feel optimistic for the coming year, even though it may have started out a little rocky. I'm very excited what's happening in our city, to see all of the volunteers volunteering for the committee positions. It just shows just a renewed interest in community involvement, and as a citizen, I find that very exciting. It was reassuring to hear from the police chief, and I do agree that I think a lot of people would be comforted to have a statement from the city. And I'm also grateful that we, through the mayor's signing of the declaration through the mayor's consortium, that we, as a city, are going on record as opposing the activities at the Capitol, the activities, ha ha, at the Capitol on Wednesday. So thank you for letting me speak. Welcome to the new year, and I pledge to be at all the meetings so I can be a more informed citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next is Glenda Shearer.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Glenda Shearer, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak at tonight's meeting. Congratulations to the new counselors. Please know that you are appreciated, and I hope that the community can realize how many hours you give in volunteer service to us, and we appreciate that. I'm coming to you tonight for two reasons. The first one is that I'm coming here to ask you for help. I'm extremely concerned about the stability of our community and about the mental well-being of our community's young people. As schools continue to be shuttered with no plan in place to open them soon and no timeline and limited communication from the school district, I feel like that there has been a negative ripple effect in our community. Around Oregon, there's been an increased call to mental health hotlines from youth and from family. I personally know of families who have moved away out of state in search of in-person learning. I know of families in our own community who are considering to leave Gladstone because of the Gladstone School District being closed with no timeline for reopening. I worry that as our schools continue to be closed, that there will be a long-lasting negative effect for Gladstone. There are multiple studies and articles that have been written addressing the damage of lifelong effects of isolation, especially for kids. So I think it's important for the City of Gladstone to consider helping in developing some supports for our students. Across the country, other cities have stepped up to help out schools, to help out as schools are closed. Larger cities have created learning hubs. I don't think that's appropriate for Gladstone. But I am in contact with a parent volunteer group in Hawkinson, Washington, that runs a program at their school. Their school is similar in size and enrollment to Gladstone, and they have a program that's been very well-received, where once a week, they have a social time that's socially distant. The kids wear masks, but it's a point of contact for kids outside of their home. And so I'd like to see if there's something that the city could do to help facilitate that. And I'm willing, totally willing to help up and lead that. I just need more hands on deck for that. The second thing that I would like to address, and this is something that I think is very important, that as the schools are definitely the heart of the community, and schools in Gladstone have always served in that capacity, I would ask that the Gladstone City Council consider issuing a statement regarding the importance of Gladstone Schools opening. Because schools are the foundation for a community, and really, who wants to move to a city where the schools are closed and you're not even allowed to speak at a school board meeting?
Thank you. Next.
Last. Last is Riley Hartman.
Yeah, no, I'll just welcome everyone to the new year and congratulations to the new council members. And that's about it, honestly. Most of my questions were answered during the course of the meeting, so I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. All right, so that's business from the audience. Next is business from the council. So we'll start with Counselor Ripley.
Counselor Ripley, you're muted.
Is that a little better? The only thing I kind of want to throw out, there's a conversation I had with my aunt the other day, and they had her living, she was, she stayed at a trailer park with somebody for a while, and there was an elderly person there with no car. And so they had her parking in this person's driveway for security reasons. It's, and I never thought about that before, but our elderly people in the community, if they don't drive anymore, their house looks vacant all the time. And we really need to keep our eye on our neighbors. And if you have somebody who is gonna have an empty driveway all the time, maybe park in your neighbor's driveway or most of all, but make it look like your neighbors or elderly people are somewhat not home by themselves. It just kind of surprised me when she mentioned that the other day, because I've never thought about our older people not having cars and their houses looking empty. So that thought's kind of been in my mind, and I thought I'd share it. That's all I got right now.
Would you be willing to talk to Colin Black about that and see if there's anything that we can do to help? He could get the word out, maybe?
Yes, I will do that. Either tomorrow or Thursday, I will stop by and talk to Colin.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, Counselor Alexander.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity, the whole community. I take this very seriously. I'm gonna do my best job, give it 100%, and I would like this to be a united council, and I hope it will be, and that we can all work together, because it does it show a united front, but then it also instills confidence in our citizens and our community. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and my door is always open.
Do you mind if I tell everybody what you've been going through today? So just so everybody knows, the fact that Greg's here is amazing because his mother went through brain surgery today for a tumor. So her surgery is done, and our prayers are with your family. So thank you very much for taking this so seriously that you showed up on a day like today.
And she told me better. She said you don't miss your first meeting. But she's out of surgery, she's in ICU, she gave us a thumbs up, she's smiling, so it's all good news.
Awesome. She's in our thoughts. Counselor Tracy?
Mayor, since I was gonna read that letter, do you want to go with the other counselors? I can read it.
Okay, that's fine. Counselor Hartman?
Sorry about that. Hello, everybody. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that we're on the traditional ancestral lands of the Clackmis, Chinook, and Kalapulia natives. This process of us knowing and acknowledging the land that we reside on is a way of us honoring and expressing gratitude to the people that inhabited this land before us. I just have a few things to touch on. I want to call out our police force. In Sergeant Okerman's report, there were two instances that really warmed my heart to read, and I want our citizens to know about them. And I'm not quite sure what officer it was, if it was Sergeant Okerman or not. But there was a report of a robbery at the Walgreens, and it was a homeless man, and he had robbed essential or taken, stolen essential items, as well as socks, because he didn't have any. And the officer took it upon himself to purchase him those socks. And so I just want to say thank you. In these hard times, a simple act of humanity like that can go a long way. And the other incident was a man was at the Baskin Robbins and labeled as suspicious, and the police officers arrived, and he turns out to be autistic, and it was handled so great. He purchased him a soda, and he drove him home. So I just want to say thank you so much for handling these situations the right way. It is fantastic to read. Thank you to the Fire Department and the Senior Center for taking care of our citizens that are in need. I really appreciate those things. I also want to say I'm so honored to be here as one of your new Gladstone City Councilors. Congratulations, Counselor Alexander and Counselor Garlington. I know that the both of you have been extremely involved in the city, and I can tell that you truly care about its growth. Looking forward to serving with you all and getting to know the rest of the council as well. I hope that we can move forward and build a new standard when it comes to the council and the city. I hope we can remove the drama and the pettiness and the unnecessary way of how people have been spoken about in public forums. For me, I just have to make this comparison. I played basketball most of my life, and the one lesson that I apply to my work ethic is that when you are on the court, you leave your BS on the sidelines. And you don't have to be friends with them, you don't have to have the same views. You can disagree with their lifestyle choices, but on the court, you have one goal, and that is to be a team. And this city is my court. I don't mean to be corny, but and you were all my teammates. And so I personally hope that we can come together and work as that team. I know that we're not always gonna agree on policy or land use. I totally understand that. But I hope that we can agree on basic human rights. I hope that we can agree that some of our community members have valid concerns and issues, and that we need to do a better job of responding to them and making their voices heard. I hope that we can also agree that our working relationship should always remain constructive and as positive as possible, both during the meeting and outside within our community. And, you know, I hope that we can all agree that just because we hold each other accountable doesn't mean that we're trying to pick on each other. In order for me to move forward and understand how we're gonna work together and communicate, there's a big thing that's been weighing on my mind since campaign season. And as many of you know, it was filled with vitriol, and a lot of that was encouraged by the divisiveness within our country and within our city. Madam Mayor, your sister called me a terrorist on several platforms. She threatened the safety of my family. She blatantly disregarded the safety of the city by threatening to gather people and drive up and down the streets to do what we don't know. She also repeatedly spewed false accusations about now 50% of your council. And several community members have come to previous meetings to read it into the record, and you have yet to acknowledge these actions were made. And I know that we can't control what other people say. I do understand that. But we can certainly come out and condemn these words, and instead, silence was chosen. And in my world, being silent is being complicit. And since you seem to be an advocate for condemning mistreatment and bullying, I don't need an apology. I just need to know, do you or do you not support those words that were said against me and Counselor Todd and Counselor Tracy and some of your community members? I just want to understand how to move forward so that I know how to communicate with you and with everybody else. And I hope that we can just move past it, but I would like to understand what your stance is on this. So thank you again to everyone. I'm so glad that we're here, and I'm looking forward to the next four years.
All right, thank you. Counselor Garlington?
Counselor Garlington, you're muted. Councilor Garlington, you're muted.
You knew you were gonna do it once. It always happens.
Once? Holy cow. Okay, so I just wanted to say that some of you may know former counselor Pat McMahon, and I just wanted to give him a really big shout out, because in December, I saw him on a couple of the news stations. He donated a lot of time and energy to this year's campaign of the Toy and Joy Makers with the Portland Fire Department. I heard him talking. He sounded a little bit tired, but he sounded really excited for everything that they had done for the kids. I just want to give Pat a huge shout out. I'm sure his volunteer hours exceeded his work hours last year for that, and my, I just thank him. I wanted to say thank you to the city staff for the branding updates that you sent out. I think that what you've got going is really moving everything in the right direction, and I appreciate your conservativeness on that, just to kind of float it around and see what's working, and then I hope that we can go further with some of it, because I really thought a lot of it was really exciting. Can I, Mike Funk? Is that okay?
Yes, what are you gonna say?
I just want to give a shout out to, I'm sorry?
It depends.
On?
On what you're gonna say.
Oh, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mike Funk at the fire department for his retirement. He and our neighbors on Berthley Street with our kids for a lot of years, and then, you know, in Gladstone, everybody is a neighbor. But I just want to congratulate him and say on your retirement, thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope you, Lori, and the kids and the grandkids are looking forward to your next chapter. I'd like to also give a shout out to all Gladstone volunteers and give you a little quote from Tom Brokaw. "It's easy to make a buck. It's a lot tougher to make a difference." So from my, from the bottom of my heart, you're all making a difference, and I personally thank you. And I thank you all for the welcomes to the city council. I hope I can make a difference. I pray every day I can make a difference, and if I say something wrong, pick up the phone and call me. I'm not afraid of a conversation. I really do want to have those conversations, so. Thank you, and everybody have a really good night.
Thank you. Councilor Todd?
Well, everybody sort of touched on some stuff. I just wanted to welcome our new councilors, Alexander Hartman and Garlington. Really excited to see what the next couple of years holds. I also was just overwhelmed with the amount of volunteers that put their name out there. We never thought we'd have a problem like that. You know, here we're gonna have 20-some-odd spots open, and we're like, ugh, and there was just, and so many new names, so many, you know, just, our town's changing. We've got a lot of young families moving in, and that's how we need to recreate the Gladstone that I love. You know, as people choosing this as their hometown. So I'm excited about that. I'm also, over the head over heels, excited about tonight's announcement from Governor Brown that we're moving to 1B, and on the 23rd, our educators and our 65 and older can start getting vaccinated if they so wish. I think that's really exciting, and it made me get a little misty for my mom, and it got me really misty for my friends that are educators that want to be back in the classroom, but don't want to do it until it's safe for them to be there. So, go fight win. Everybody, hold on. That's it.
They haven't even finished the 1As yet, though.
No, but they opened it up completely to 1A. I got mine the other day. I was pretty excited about that, and just to let everyone know.
Yeah, keep us posted how well that goes.
I did, there was nothing. And the nurse that just happened to have me sit down was one of my regular clients, so it was awesome. We got to chit chat.
All right, well, if you get any bad side effects, make sure to let us know.
No, nothing so far.
All right, thank you. Councilor Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I too, when going through the monthly reports, noticed those two incidents that Councilor Hartman spoke on. And I do commend the police department. It is a touch of humanity. It is empathy, which we don't always see, certainly not in today's day and age. So I commend Chief Schmerber and his staff for their actions here. I think that it's important for that to happen for us. This is a small community. We don't know exactly who passes through our community, but we do have people, as one of our public commenters said tonight, we have people who are in crisis right now in our town. And I just really appreciate the empathy that was put forward by the officers, and personally congratulate him on a job well done. Earlier, I mentioned a Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium letter. Also, it needs to be known that there are other statements made by other elected politicians or elected officials in this region that, quite frankly, today have pretty much broken and blown up in the press. These are folks who have a lot of, I don't say control, but influence on our city, in that they're county commissioners. And one of them is what I would, in what I would call kind of a serious situation right now, being newly elected, and having a Facebook or a social media presence that I found absolutely abhorrent when I reviewed it. We can disagree about a lot of things, but one of the things that we can't disagree on is right and wrong with regards to how you treat human beings. I mean, if we're disagreeing on that, we're probably all kind of lost. I want to read the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium. This is directly a statement made by the MMC. The statement's title is "On the D.C. Insurrection." I will be, there may be people on this call, there may be people who are observing this who have different opinions about what has happened at the nation's capital. I do not. I took an oath many years ago to serve in the United States Army. I worked in intelligence and security. I know what strongman dictatorships look like. I don't have any doubt in my mind. So when the Capitol was stormed, that was an insurrection, and I don't, I'm not, it's not debatable to me. The 117th Congress has certified the votes. Regardless, the Mayor's, Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium put out a statement, and it begins as thus. "The Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium strongly condemns the acts of domestic terrorism that occurred in Washington, D.C. this week. This action has no place in American political discourse. There are those of us in the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium who supported President Trump. There are those of us in the Metropolitan's Mayor Consortium who supported President-elect Biden, and there are those of us in the MMC who supported other candidates for the highest of offices. All of that is history. We are united in dismay to see a ceremony of peaceful change of administration for 240 years smeared by Wednesday's violence. As mayors, we have spent too much time and too much effort to improve the lives of our constituents to accept this as anything but what it is, a blatant disregard for the flag, republic, and the Constitution. A similar action occurred in Salem at our state capitol. It goes beyond the pale that we would countenance such abhorrent behavior towards our public officials. It is proper that we air our grievances. This is what the First Amendment is all about. But that amendment does not condone trampling on the rights of others. The right to do the public's business is equally important. And if that isn't enough, closer to home, we have an individual who took it upon himself to confront the mayor of Portland with high-volume obscenities, in quote, "actions." Having differences of opinion is a vital fabric of our republic. The attack on Mayor Wheeler, the absurd actions in Salem, and the horror in Washington are not examples of free expression. Rather, they are the actions of those who have lost touch with reality and deserve condemnation and legal consequences. As we move beyond this, the Metro Mayor's Consortium hopes that we can recover from this and direct our moral, redirect our moral compass. We cannot stand by and watch this. We need to participate in the reconstruction of our national dreams, and we need to do so with intention and purpose. We ask everyone to join us in making this country, once again, in the words of Abraham Lincoln, "With malice towards none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right, as God gives us the right. Let us strive to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations. So be it. Thine sincerely, the mayors of the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, of which there are 26, including our mayor, Tammy Stempel, the honorable Mayor Tammy Stempel, who I believe backs this statement." To close, I want to say that I grew up in a rural area, and I understand the urban-rural divide. I also understand how certain folks that may have lived in the urban environment for all their lives, there is a difference between those who live in the rural environment and those who live in the urban environment. Having grown up and lived in both, I feel like I'm kind of a bridge, to a certain degree, because I look like I'm a very conservative individual. I dress conservatively, what have you, but I'm a liberal at heart. And what I feel that we all should do is start reaching out to each other so that we can all understand what are the concerns, what are the issues, and we can also start listening to each other. What I hear from the rural folks that I associate with is, people in the city don't listen to the folks that are in the rural areas. And I hear from the city folks, we're not really sure what's going on out there. I think we really all need to put down our swords and shields and just start sitting down with each other. And, and I'm just saying, I'm an open door to that, for anybody who has a divergent view about this than I do. I'm not, I'm not just saying this is the end-all-be-all, but I do believe in the Constitution, and I believe that it's been violated recently. Thank you for the time, Mayor. I appreciate you entertaining my thoughts on them.
Thank you. All right, so I'm last. First, the Food Pantry is moving to the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off of Glen Echo. We're gonna be in the portables in the back of their property. The church folks are fixing it up for us right now, new linoleum, painting, the whole nine yards. So we are hoping to be moved over by the end of the month. In the meantime, we're continuing to help with the COVID quarantine folks and the homebound seniors. And then also, if there's emergency box deliveries, we've got that set up as well. So please stay tuned to the social media pages that the Food Pantry utilizes for the updates. We are in need of volunteers, so if you're interested, please send me an email, and I will connect you with Mary Zurdrow. It's so easy for people in COVID days to sit behind their keyboard and communicate that way, but honestly, we have so many people in need, as Councilor Tracy said, and the only way that we can meet that need is to provide services, and that requires volunteers. So please, if you have it in your heart, volunteer. December was the annual toy and food drive. This year, we served about, I think, just over 120 families. I want to thank the folks at the Gladstone Fire Department who stepped up and ran with it at the last minute. A handful, very small handful of firefighters gathered the food and toys. They staged it, they filled bags, they scheduled people to drive by and pick up, and those that couldn't, they delivered in over two days. This was a lot of work. Thanks to Colin Black and the senior center staff for letting us stage in their community room. If it wasn't for that, we don't know what we would do, because the school was not allowing us to use their facilities. And thanks to the school district for gathering food and toys and donating gift cards, which was amazing. I happened to be in line behind someone that was buying $1,000 worth of gift cards from Safeway for this food drive, or for the toy and food drive, and she maxed out. You can't buy more than $1,000 of gift cards in a day, so she had to come back four days in a row to buy $4,000 worth of gift cards. So thank you very, very much. So many people stepped up, even though it was putting themselves at risk, and thank you. Thank you's not enough. COVID numbers keep going up. Gladstone, we're now at 271 cases, which is up 26 from the previous week. So I can't stress enough the need to follow the safety protocol. We're hearing this over and over again. We need to continue. Wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands. If you have some symptoms, please quarantine. The last thing I want to do is make a comment on Councilor Hartman's statement. Yes, it is my sister, and yes, she puts some stuff on social media. Bullying, belittling, dehumanizing, oppressing is never good, in any way, shape, or form, by anybody. And I saw that. I was absolutely appalled, but then I was, then I received 35 pages of Facebook screenshots that led up to that statement that she made and the statements that were made afterwards. So there's a lot of very abhorrent, horrible things that were said on both sides. So that's all I have to say. Bullying is never, ever good, and I stand by that 100%. So that's it for me. Will someone make a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made to adjourn by Councilor Alexander and seconded by Councilor Garlington. Do we have any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Alexander?
Yes.
Councilor Tracy?
Yes.
Councilor Hartman?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. Meeting was adjourned at 8:56 PM. Thank you all very, very much.